We're live.
Awesome. Get a couple of seconds and we'll get going right on four o'clock. Couple more seconds. All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone who is in attendance live today and we are having some issues with our Facebook Live and our technology on that end. So once we've completed the meeting, the meeting as a whole will be posted live to our social media pages afterwards. And yeah, so I'd like to call the regular meeting of council. First, I should remind everyone that all mobile devices should be turned off and or switched to silent mode. And then I would like to welcome everyone to Monday, February 10th, 2025, regular meeting of council. I'm calling the meeting to order at four o'clock on the dot. Okay. Okay. Moving on. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? You're all good. I have a motion that council hereby accepts the agenda for Monday, February 10th, 2025, regular meeting of council as circulated or amended. Moved by councillor Wheeler, seconded by councillor Lake. Are there any questions regarding the agenda? Worship?
Nope.
Awesome. All in favor?
Yep.
Perfect. Moving on to any disclosures of interest. None? Okay. And then now I have a motion to approve the previous minutes. Hereby, that council hereby adopts the minutes of a regular meeting of council held on January 27th, 2025, as circulated or amended. Moved by councillor Lake, seconded by councillor Giuliano. Are there any questions regarding the minutes? All in favor?
If.
Perfect. Carried. Okay, we're moving all the way down now to student councillor reports. So councillor Anthony, do you want to kick us off?
Sure, why not? So we have come to the end of the NSS double A season as we have held the semifinals here in Marathon at Marathon High School last week. Both of our senior teams, basketball and volleyball, have moved on to the finals tomorrow on Wednesday at Lake Superior High School in Terrace Bay. The boys defeated Chateau Janess of Longmac and the girls defeated the Geraldton Knights in their elimination games. Tomorrow, the girls will face off against the Accol St. Joseph's Chevrolet leaders in a semifinal match and hopefully are on route to the championship banner game. And on Wednesday for the same thing for the senior boys, except we play the Chapel High School Raiders and hope to progress to the banner game. Good luck for me, to all athletes participating, and let's make sure we come home with a banner. Most of all, as Sabbath Street. Also, as it approaches, a quick shout out to the Winter Fest that is going on in the community this weekend. I personally look forward to getting out to see some of these events and most importantly, be a part of it, be a part of the community through these great times and the recreational opportunities the community has to offer. Let's hope the weather is great and the times are even better for this weekend. A big thank you to all the businesses and people that helped organize and are participating in this event.
Awesome. Councillor Matos?
Good afternoon, everyone. Things have been pretty quiet in Marathon High School this week as we kick off semester two. Students are now settling into their new classes and seeing their new teachers. And semester one report cards are ready to go out in the mail. So keep an eye out on those. And on another note, during the last council meeting, I shared my thoughts on the challenges surrounding healthcare in rural communities and how these challenges impact students' academic performances and overall well-being. Since then, I've been in touch with the principal to gather more information on this topic. I'm currently learning both the relevant rules and regulations in place. And in the coming weeks, I plan to revisit this issue with councils supported by documentation to help hold current and future students facing similar challenges.
Awesome. Great. Best of luck to our students also doing the varsity stuff this upcoming week. So great. Awesome. Okay. Moving on to CEO reports. Mr. Skorchinsky will read the report.
Just a brief update for council tonight on the Active Living Centre and some of our progress to eight in 2025. Obviously, we discussed this as part of our recent draft budget, but from a process perspective, where administration is at with the project, finalizing our Class A cost estimate, which isn't going to drive us if we change from our Class B, but it is the final document that will be issued as construction-ready documentation. We completed our pre-qualification process last week. Our team of engineers, pardon me, town marathon representatives and our partners at BN participated on the prequal team. We've shortlisted three general contractors, three electrical contractors and four mechanical contractors who met the minimum requirements to proceed with the tender process. All have been contacted within the last week and all are prepared to submit bids, which will make for a competitive process, which obviously should keep costs in line. We're progressing. I just announced Mr. Paris this afternoon. The first week of March, we're aiming to issue the tender documents to those that were selected in the pre-qualification process. And that's a six-week tender process for this project of this size. It won't go long because we use the pre-qualification process. So this will help keep the number of bids that need to be reviewed manageable number for us. Development of the hydro line on site. So this is actually taking on a bit of a life of its own, but we've had good in recent months. Good coordination with Hydro One. So it's a fairly big project to move the hydro line that's located on the site because that is the line that also is used to feed town of Marathon. So we're just going through the process of redesigning that infrastructure and how it's going to outlay on the site. Obviously, we want to be mindful of sightlines. You know, we don't want to be, you know, looking out to the pool window as an example and seeing three hydro lines as we look on the Lake Superior. So we just finalized the design late last week. And now we're going to be looking to put the cost estimate together over the next month on what that's going to cost. And then the plan would be obviously part and parcel, you know, with site design and preloading of the site will be the relocation of the hydro line. And that sets us up for physical construction in 2026. Deep development of a detailed financial analysis to reveal alternative financing and borrowing options. So really what we're going to be looking at now, now that we move to Class A, cost estimation and construction-ready is looking at different scenarios from a borrowing perspective. So, you know, making the assumption, you know, we've asked the federal and the provincial governments for $55 million in total funding. Why we don't get that? You know, we have talked about this, you know, council administration previously as part of strategic planning. What does that look like? So now we're going through that exercise to have those options available to us when the tender process is completed because that will be an important part of the discussion. And then finally, internally, we're also working on the terms of reference for a three-year operational business plan. So obviously with the new Active Living Centre, how we do recreation in Marathon is going to change for the better, of course. But it's also going to change in terms of utilizing technology to access the site. You know, what, you know, the fees and charges will be for the new Active Living Centre and the activities that are offered, our staffing levels. Obviously, you know, we currently don't have any life cards, as an example. You don't need to recast what that staffing requirement looks like. So that'll be part and parcel of some of the work we'll be doing over the summer months as well as issuing that refresh proposal for the business plan for the Active Living Centre. And finally, on the lobbying front, we met with Minister Lumston's staff and Mr. Rickford's staff down at the Roma Conference presented the project once again. Obviously, both ministries are well aware of the project. You know, they always point out that there's only so much funding and it's oversubscribed, but had that opportunity to present our project again. And then the mayor and I and representatives from our partners in BN with Federal Minister Sken Smith on January 30th for the better part of 2025 minutes to also discuss the project. It was actually a very good meeting to get some clarity. He was very honest and said, we're not going to get the $35 million we've asked for. But he did say that our project met all the eligibility requirements. It is on the list for projects that can be funded. He didn't commit to it, but he was very aware of the project, very aware of our partners with the project. And what he did say is we can expect an answer on that project likely in mid-February with respect to that item. So it was a positive meeting. You always ask for the most and hopefully you receive that. But in this case, you know, I think we're probably confident we're going to get some amount, but not the amount total that we asked for. So going back to what I previously mentioned, you know, that'll be part of the work that we need to do in terms of what are our formal requirements, different financing options going forward. So certainly still a tremendous amount of work taking part of the process for this project and happy to answer any questions that council asks.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Skorchinsky. Any questions or comments on this report? And keep in mind, this report is for information only. Councillor Lake?
Yeah, certainly I would say this is, as we did our straight plan and we've done our budgeting, this is the the big project for administration for this council. So just wondering, as you, we don't know what the money coming in is going to be. So just asking to have as many options laid out for us as possible, I think, you know, I think hopefully it'll be easy choices, but maybe it's hard choices and knowing what each level of borrowing would need for the municipality, I think it's a push apart for us to make the decision about where we're comfortable and what we should take. So just the, I think that's the one thing I'd love to see is as you do those financial analysis to give as many options to us as possible.
Councillor Giuliano?
Under the operational business plan, is that last time we were talking about, you mentioned, you know, how things will run differently and also the possibility of divesting in some properties. Is that where that happens? Like are we going to, is there some group that happens from starting the community center or, you know, the property, the current arena, some of those kind of things? Is that where that happens in that state?
Yeah, it's part of the process, no question. You know, obviously we're, realistically, you know, we're, you know, two and a half years, you know, from being in the new building. And this probably takes us about a year and a half, you know, but as we, you know, re-envision, you know, you know, as an example, moving the seniors club, obviously is one of our major tenants at Lake into the new Active Living Centre. What does that mean for that building? You know, and, you know, part of the discussion, then ultimately the council decision will be, you know, do we divest it? Do we tear it down? You know, what are those options? So, you know, this is, you know, all those questions really become, you know, fundamental, you know, for the next term of council in the new strat plan that kind of takes us, you know, from 2026 when the next municipal election is going to be held kind of 2020 or 2030.
Yeah, I was thinking about the financial implications for some of those choices that may affect the options that Ray was mentioning.
Yeah, and this is, you know, just be a refinement of those numbers. So we worked some of those. If you remember when we hired Mr. Comesso to do the initial analysis for us, you know, he did some of those at a high level. But now that we're drilling down into, okay, you know, we're going to be putting shovels in the ground, you know, as the plan, what does that really look like?
Great. Any other questions? Worship, are you okay on the line or?
No, everything is good. I think Mr. Skorchinsky identified the process going forward as clearly as possible and those numbers will be presented back to council in the near future with the, I guess, re-statement of government specifically Ontario will have a better indication when the application is going to be processed. And as Mrs. Skorchinsky identified, the meeting with Minister Smith was awesome and hopefully we'll have that information presented to us quickly as possible. So with all those numbers coming to us in the next little while and of course, the tender going out, we'll be in a better position to understand what the needs of the municipal are going to be.
Awesome. And to touch on our worship's point here, Mr. Skorchinsky, is there any opportunity for the upcoming election to throw anything into a tailspin when it comes to the application already being submitted? Would we need to resubmit if there was a new party that was successful? What does that look like?
Yeah, that's actually a great question. There is some potential risk, there's no question. We don't think there is based on our discussions with both the problems and the federal government because, you know, both the funding programs that we applied to, provincial and federally, were approved in the last fiscal budgets. You know, but the contracts haven't been issued as yet, which means that there's no legal agreement in place. So a new government could theoretically, you know, put an end to those programs. Highly unlikely. You know, especially, you know, since we have two projects, two projects or two funding applications that have been accepted as part of being eligible for those funds. Where there's a bit of a risk, it doesn't really fundamentally, you know, change the position from a tender perspective, it's just when the funds flow. You know, so, you know, initially we are hoping for approvals, you know, in the next month or two. Realistically, it's probably further in 2025. You know, but that being stated, one of the exercises we need to do internally also is, you know, what does our cash flow look like? Or our cash flow requirements, you know, for project construction over the next two years. You know, we don't need the money in the bank in two months to make the project happen. We just need approval, knowing the money is there. And then we need to outlay based on, you know, the critical path and the milestones for the project. You know, when are those draws going to be required in terms of, you know, the overall project and what that looks like? So we're tracking internally, right where we still want to be from a tendering as well as a financial analysis perspective. It's likely that the, you know, the approvals happen and maybe the illegal agreements are delayed a little bit. So, you know, no major risk. Always a new risk going to change, always risk with a new change of government.
Okay, awesome. Anyone else? Councillor Lake?
Yeah, probably on the same top of mind stuff is around tariffs and buying from outside the country. I think you mentioned that, I'm just trying to remember back to the budget. Most of the purchasing is within Canada anyway? Or are we looking at a significant increase in cost based on?
No, we don't see it for the Active Living Centre at all. Part of the process, you know, you know, part of the reason you do a pre-qualification process is your bidders get to, even though we haven't issued the tender, they've already gone out and suspected that we need, there's no question. And in most cases, you know, we know anecdotally and just speaking with them, you know, almost, you know, the entire project is Canadian product, if there are possible. So we don't see there being a risk to the terrorists driving up this particular project just based on the timelines of the process we've utilized.
Anyone else? Okay, great. Okay, moving on to administration reports. We have Mrs. Goatsy who will read us a verbal report on the 2025 Winter Fest activities.
Good evening, council. So it's already that time for Marathon's second annual winter festival that's happening this weekend, February 13th to the 17th. So we're going to start off on Thursday, February 13th with the Marathon Legion is hosting their wing night from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. A snow and ice sculpture contest is being sponsored by Pick River Development Corporation. So that's running for the full weekend. Cash prizes are up for grabs and it's open to all Marathon and BN residents. The Good Tooth and Amber Chenier are hosting a lip sync battle on Thursday at Holy Savior School. So that should be fun. That starts at 6:00. Cash prizes as well are to be won. The Hawkswell Family Fish Derby is being hosted again. You can register by contacting Daphne or crossover video. So that's happening for the full weekend. Cash, cash or not cash prizes, but prizes are definitely up for grabs as well. Bear Kemla was hosting a winter coloring contest. AW is also hosting a drawing contest on Thursday from 3:00 to 4:30. Bring your own coloring pencils and that's hosted at the restaurant. Starting on Friday, February 14th, Northwest Employment Works is hosting a winter open house. So come on by to learn more about job opportunities and training. So that's 2:30 to 4:30 at the North Shore Campus. The town is hosting cardio drumming with our instructor Tasha Kelly at the Lakeview Community Center from 11:00 to 12:00. The Cross Country Ski and Snowshoe Club on Valentine's Day, they're encouraging us to come out for a two-for-one trail pass. This is the special for the day. The big event on Friday is hosted by the Town of Marathon, Barrick, the Lions Club, the fire departments, as well as the Snow Kickers. So we're doing a community bonfire and skate at Penling Park. Snow kickers are also providing snowmobile rides. The lake is cleared off for skating, which is nice. The Lions Club is hosting the free hot chocolate and Barrick is going to be doing hot dogs. Bring your chair and Beaver Tales will also be there. Cornhole Night, the Marathon Legion is hosting that on Friday night from, starting at 7:00 p.m. The kitchen is open. On Saturday, February 15th, the ski club is offering ski lessons. There's also a legion market from one to four. Investors Group is sponsoring a free movie on Saturday at 1:00 p.m. That's Dogman. The Marathon Library is hosting assault arts, snowflakes and winter carnival hunts from 12:00 to 2:00. Girl Guide is offering, they're doing spaghetti takeaway dinner offered at the St. John's United Church between 4:00 and 5:30. There's going to be an improv comedy show at St. John's United Church on Saturday at 7:00 p.m. Get your tickets for $15 per person. The Marathon Legion and Dr. DJ are hosting a 90s retro dance from 8:00 to 1:00 a.m. On Sunday, February 16th, the ski club is offering snowshoe for beginners at 11:00 a.m. Guided hike. The Town of Marathon is hosting a kids' Valentine's Day dance at Lakeview Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And music will be provided by Dr. DJ. Holy Savior Parish Church in Naush are offering a monster bingo. Doors open at 1:00. Calling starts at 2:00. There's going to be sliding fun at the Bay Hill. So sponsored by Phil's Waste Services, Tim Hortons, Canadian Tire, Parkland Pentecostal Church, Twisted Treats and the Snow Kickers. So hot chocolate music, sliding, snowman buildings, no painting. So that's all happening at the Bay Hill from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. On Monday, February 17th, Family Game Day at the Pentecostal Church from 2:00 to 4:30. Cross Country Ski Club is offering free entry on Family Day and the town is offering public skating and shinny and family shinny in the afternoon and that's all free. So if you want to know anything else anymore about any of these events, you can check out the town's Facebook page, our website. We have all the advertisements up at the arena. We will have a flyer in the mercury this week and I believe Daryl's going to chat with Al and see if it's on this week. Yes? Okay. So we want to extend our gratitude to all participants, businesses, organizations and organizations and community members who have helped assist with running all these events for our winter festival. We hope to see everybody out there this weekend.
Awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Gauthier. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this report? Awesome. Thank you very much.
All of you out this weekend enjoying all these activities.
Awesome.
Just one comment. I'm a little hurt that 90s music is considered reckless.
Okay, moving on. We're jumping onto the bylaws here. So I got by law number 2093 being a bylaw to amend the corporation of the Town of Marathon Sewage Bylaw Number 1582 will be presented. Copy to all members. And just make sure I'm in line. So I have a motion that by law number 2093 being a bylaw to amend the corporation of the Town of Marathon Sewage Bylaw Number 1582 be read a first, second and third time and finally passed this 10th day of February 2025. Any move or a secondary? Councillor Wheeler, councillor Lake, any questions?
So it's a change just that the interceptor has to be present?
So I haven't had a change. So really, the change we've made is what we've added in is just some, some language with some new businesses that we expect to see or just looking at a future-based perspective. So we've added in the terminology in the second line, or car and vehicle wash establishment. And then you'll see in the last line, and petroleum-based undercoating. Okay. So what we've done is we just made sure that we've captured, you know, anything, you know, potentially from a vehicle perspective. So you've always needed the interceptor. Now we've just broadened the scope of which businesses require it. So again, of course, this is just a safety item to ensure that, you know, the proper things are going into our sewage system and if they're not, then they're caught in the interceptor.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Rick, you're good?
Yep.
Hey, carried. Okay, new business. So information has been received regarding the blue box program. Copy to all members. Did you want me to read that?
Yeah, sure. Can I highlight it or can I have a conversation around it?
Perfect. Okay, so good morning. Please share this email with council, senior management and mayor. The blue box and recycling are essential to many of your citizens. In northeastern Ontario, municipalities will transition to full extended producer responsibility, EPR, for the household blue box program over the next few years. EPR will be important for the province of Ontario as producers, stewards will soon create a sustainable circulatory economy for the paper, packaging and products of a household recycles. Our producer, producers, stewards are not responsible for products purchased within the industrial, commercial and institutional ICI sectors. Products recycled at home are disposed of by an ICI-funded program or landfill. Or a landfill. All municipalities are concerned with the lifespan of landfills and Phonam believes it is important that the province and the producer stewards start discussing the transition to a producer-funded EPR system for the recyclables generated by the ICI sector. We ask your council to consider supporting the draft resolution below and happy to answer any questions we have. And so whereas under Ontario Regulation 39121, blue box producers are fully accountable and financially responsible for their products and packaging once they reach the end of their life and are disposed of for eligible sources only. And whereas ineligible sources, which producers, producers are not responsible for, including businesses, place of worship, daycares, campgrounds, public basing and internal areas of municipal-owned buildings and not-for-profit organizations such as shelters and food banks. And whereas should a municipality continue to provide services to the ineligible sources, the municipality will be required to oversee the collection, transportation and processing of the recycling, assuming 100% of the cost. And whereas those costs will further burden the municipality's finances and potentially take resources away from the vital infrastructure projects. Therefore, be resolved that the council hereby request that the province amend Ontario Regulation 39121 blue box so that the producers are responsible for the end-of-life management of recycling products from all sources. And further to that, this resolution be forwarded to the Honorable Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, your local MPP, Ama Roma and Jill, did you want to just give us kind of a little?
Yeah. So what it means for us obviously is, you know, you'll see in the budget that there's, we have a carrying cost of about $27,000 for recycling. So residential is covered by the blue box regulation. What isn't covered is the ICI. So you'll see that number in our budget. That's what the collection cost for ICI in Marathon right now. So obviously bigger. So theoretically, we're subsidizing the ICI sector to the tune of 100%, you know. So manageable in our community, but for those that have, you know, large ICI sectors, it's a, it's a big cost. Or they simply say, we're just not going to pick it up because there's no funding for us to pick it up and we'll just send it to the landfill. So obviously administratively, we'd recommend that, you know, this regulation go through because that means every cycle is 100% subsidized by the Ontario government, not municipalities.
Wonderful. Okay, I have a motion that council hereby supports the attached, attached resolution pertaining to the blue box program. And further to that, a copy of this motion be forwarded to the individuals listed on the originating resolution. Move or second? Lake, Giuliano and questions?
Maybe just one, one. It seems like a no-brainer for us because it would take it off our books, but I actually struggle to think of the reason why there were those two streams to begin with from a provincial perspective. Is there something I'm not seeing apply? It wouldn't just be one stream?
So we're referring to ICI versus residential?
Yeah, like what's the, why would the problem have?
So yeah, I, so obviously the ICI sector can be a beast where you think about, so, you know, you would just think about some of, you know, you buy a product at, you know, one of our local stores of the amount of cardboard as an example, right? It's huge. You know, so it's a big cost to recycle that or come up with programs to deal, you know, with those plus. Now, some, you know, some stores, you know, nationally have their own programs where they're not recycled locally and they're sent back to depots in other areas. But, you know, it's just, you know, my sense is it's just mirrored the size of the sector, you know, whereas, you know, from a residential perspective, you're dealing with either blue bags or, you know, blue bins or green bins. In this case, you're dealing with much more robust products or just larger items such as cardboard.
That doesn't feel like a Okay, that doesn't feel like a reason not to support this. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope.
All right, all in favor? Carrie? Okay, and then moving on, we got additional council information. That's me. I just wanted to make a quick announcement on behalf of Confederation College. We recently just announced the Fast Track for our Practical Nursing Program. So we are looking to fill across the east region about eighteen seats in the PN program. If you know anyone who's looking to become a registered practical nurse and wants to do it in a sixteen-month time span for the Fast Track component, have them reach out to the North Shore Campus. And deadlines for applications are in about four weeks, so we're moving past. And yeah, we're hoping to educate and get some more nurses working in our institutions.
Is that for adults coming back into the system or is that also for?
That's for recent graduates, that's for mature learners, that's for anyone who has the credentials and they're interested in becoming a registered practical nurse. Give us a call and we'll give you any more of the details because you'll have to have some of your prerequisites from high school and stuff like that. But, uh, yeah, phone number is eight oh seven two two nine two four six four. Anyone is interested in any more information regarding our Fast Track PN program starting in March, give us a call. And moving on to announcements, I'm just going to announce that members will be going into a closed session to discuss plans and instructions for negotiations, personal matters about an identical, identical individual, an acquisition or disposition of land. And with that, I have a motion to adjourn at the hour of four thirty-one. I need to move over in a secondary? Counselor Wheeler, Counselor Lee? And, all good? No questions?
Rick, do you want to leave and come back in?
Do I have to come back in?
Yeah, let's just close and come back in to make sure we're not recording some.
Okay, so do I have the link to come back in, the same link?
Yeah, same one.